This morning's committee hearing is a special hearing. Joined by councilmembers Perry and Cardenas, City Attorney, we have a quorum. I think we will get started. All of the... There's no public comment. I think all of the comment deals specifically with what we will be dealing with today. So Ms. Sauer, why don't you read the items? You know, Items 1A through 1C, and then we'll have public comment.
Okay. Item 1A: Communication from the Mayor and CAO and CLA Joint Report Relative to the Budget for the Thirty-Seventh Program Year Housing and Community Development Consolidated Plan, CDBG, Home, HOPWA, and ESG, Two Thousand Eleven, Twelve, Fourth-Year Action Plan. Item 1B: Community Redevelopment Agency and Community Development Department Reports and CAO and CLA Joint Report Relative to Possible Repayment to CDD of the Twenty-Year Community Development Block Grant Loan to CRA of Approximately Four Point Seven Million and a Plan to Repay the Twenty-Year CDBG Loan of Approximately Ten Point One Million. Item 1C: CDD Report and CAO and CLA Joint Report Relative to Authority to Release a Request for Proposal for the New Los Angeles Business Source System.
The first person, Rita Maria Royal. Leilani Zanicki or... Zachary. You write a little bit like me and Beth Mueller. You're first. Good to see you again.
Good morning, City Council. City Councilwoman Jan Perry. My name is Rita Maria Royal. I'm here on behalf of the people of Skid Row Downtown Los Angeles. And this is my fifth time requesting and asking if in this consolidated plan are there funds to establish a new personal development center in Skid Row. I have seen and have experienced the great need there for this center. I'm also a resident in Skid Row. I have lived there for seven years, going on eight years. I have had the opportunity to work in the Skid Row... For Skid Row Development Corporation Light Program Independently Living Through Employment as a case manager, job developer, and was able to talk with countless of homeless people. I had a caseload that was non-consistent of one hundred to three hundred clients monthly. These clients lived in the Union Rescue Mission, L.A. Mission, Salvation Army Harbor Light Program, Stride Program, Lamp Program, T-House, Drop-In Center, Russ Hotel, Panama Hotel, Rotary House, Weingart Center programs, along with the residents of SRO, Skid Row Housing and Trust, to know that the people there are in great need of personal development skills which deal with the mechanics of human behavior. We, the people of Skid Row Downtown Los Angeles, are in agreement that this center is greatly needed. I also have a petition. This center will help the people identify these social skills never taught. It will also allow the people in Skid Row Downtown Los Angeles to experience freedom from what they have not known. The people are not educated properly in social skills or on the mechanics of human behavior. This center will provide education, social skills on mechanics of human behavior. Better to understand what I mean about the mechanics of human behavior, you can go online to Roland@PowerParenting.net or Roland Gilbert Stress Free Power Parenting. So again, I ask the City Council and Councilwoman Jan Perry, on behalf of the people of Skid Row Downtown Los Angeles, are there funds in this consolidated plan to establish such a center?
Thank you. Leilani.
Good morning. To all parties concerned, I write this brief notation for the perspective of, as a prospective stakeholder in Los Angeles, the downtown Skid Row area, I am seeking to give some insight on the plight of the people who reside in the area. The Community Development Block Grant Thirty-Seven-Year Consolidated Plan, I believe, has been devised to aid those who have been affected by homelessness and also to aid veterans. I believe Skid Row has the highest concentration of homelessness and displaced veterans in this nation. As it stands, this is the most disenfranchised area and our most vulnerable populace, and also the most neglected in the funding resources. What I'm saying is that the consolidated plan is nothing new, and what I'm asking is that the consolidated plan become anew. I'm the founder and CEO of two wonderful grassroots organizations, one's Garment of Praise and two, A New You. Garment of Praise is a creative arts organization. I'm doing a play about civil rights, and I'll pass it out to you all later. And we also have A New You, which we serve and assist veterans and women of domestic violence and encourage people to stop living a death style and get real and live a lifestyle, become anew. It's a women's empowerment organization, and we have a men's and women's and youth division focusing on those who have been affected by domestic violence and all forms of human rights abuse. We provide workshops, meditation, yoga, health and wellness classes, entrepreneurial social skills and behavior modification skills and education. For education is empowerment to me. We believe in the whole person. This is also called a spiritual group. We have done this with zero funding. Oh, how much more efficient and effective we will be to receive funding issues from the consolidated plan. We also have ideas on green technology to help to green Skid Row. This area can no longer be overlooked, and faith-based organizations also. We are a very viable community, a self-supporting community, talented and educated, and today I stand as a spiritual ambassador and visionary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What you can do is submit that to the court if you want so that it's on record.
Okay, I have copies, Mr. Wesson. Thank you all.
Good morning. Thanks for hearing us again. My name is Beth Mueller. I'm a stakeholder and a member of Community Church, Central City Community Church in Skid Row. I understand, we understand, that there's going to be reduced funding in general. I would just like to point out that that only highlights the priority of focusing on Skid Row. It's one of our most vulnerable communities, and so if we're going to have less money, it sort of makes it a little simpler to know where we should be spending the money. The HUD funding is for eliminating effectively homelessness, and we are the epicenter of homelessness. So we will continue to walk with you as you make these decisions, understanding that the funding will be greatly reduced. We appreciate the report by the commission, and we just want to point out the numbers in there, having had six meetings, public comment, public participation, attendance of four, 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 two, and zero people representing the public at five of those six meetings, but at the sixth meeting in Skid Row, we had forty-five. And the meeting we had prior to that, before the commission itself was running the meetings, we had eighty people representing Skid Row and the needs there. So we do, we appreciate the report, and we stand in favor of supporting the family source centers also. We want to partner with the representatives of the family source center and work with them that we would have one and more of a walking distance area to Skid Row and just put our skills and initiatives together because we think we can do a lot of work cooperatively. We also support the business source center moving from the Labaps to the business source format, and we ask, and as the request is in the report by the commission, that one of those business source centers be located within a square that we've designed within Skid Row, which would make it walking distance for the small business ideas that are being developed in Skid Row to have resources at their footprints and their fingertips. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go forward, if there's anyone else that wants to fill out a speaker card, you need to do it now because after I call the next group of speakers, I am cutting off debate in the interest of time. Reverend Dr. Jeffrey Thomas, Sarah Burdine, Burdine, and Joseina McKenzie. You're first, sir.
Good morning. To the council and to Councilmember District Nine, Jan Perry, of course, to you, Chairman. My name is Jeffrey Thomas. I'm pastor of Central City Community Church on Sixth and San Pedro located in Skid Row. I hold a PhD in theology and personality with an emphasis in counseling and psychotherapy. I did my doctoral work looking at Skid Row from a very systematic and systemic way, and I understand Skid Row at a very intimate level. And what we are saying in Skid Row is that, given the national priority on homelessness and Skid Row being the epicenter of homelessness in the nation, deserves greater attention from the consolidated plan. And we have very specific ideas about how to increase the upward mobility of those who have, for whatever reason, become homeless. And so we were asking the council and those who are a part of this process to emphasize the need of Skid Row. And as it has been stated, it is a very disenfranchised community, often overlooked and ignored, yet there are some very positive things happening in the community and a lot of potential. And it would be such a great benefit to the community and to the city of Los Angeles if we were to be able to cooperate in very positive ways in order to increase that upward mobility and to transform the lives of those in Skid Row and to also transform the culture of the community of Skid Row.
Thank you, Reverend. I forgot who's next. Yeah, I think it's you.
I want to thank you for allowing me to speak here before this committee meeting, this committee. My name is Sarah Burdine, and I'm the Executive Director of Haven Hills. And I'm here today not to oppose the Thirty-Seven Consolidated Plan, but to take issue with one of the items, which is within there, one line item that is for the Domestic Violence Shelter Organization Grants, and it represents an eight percent cut this year over previous funding of the CBGD funding. And I would like to read to you from the Chief Analyst Attachment J, that domestic violence shelter operations, what is going to be lost? The DV programs will be subject to $236,000 reduction in funding. Fifteen hundred individuals served by the DV program on an annual basis, and we're looking at about a hundred and twenty individuals in the reduction of this money. There is a direct correlation between funds and individuals served, given that we are paying for available beds. Now here's where the issue comes in.
You know, Ms. Burdine, looking at my notes, I thought that if we pass the plan today, we're restoring that funding.
That's correct. My issue is with the distribution, the scoring and rating process of CDD and its relation to the allocation of the grant funds. It has to be questioned strongly. This competitive process has resulted in cutting almost $140,000 from Haven Hills, but yes, we are higher ranking in the scoring, actually the fourth highest ranking, and lower-ranking agencies are being awarded with a lot of dollars. In fact, there is a Long Beach program that is new to the CDBG fundings that are being distributed by the city, and it relates to $180,000. And our issue is that we are being penalized, and we're actually seeing a thirty-six percent less money coming in, and there has been no capacity building in beds or change in programs. So I'd like to actually, and there's a great inequity being administered here, and I'm requesting on behalf of the clients that there is an investigation into this with CDD and that you address and possibly realign the allocations.
Thank you. Thank you. McKenzie?
Good morning. My name is Joseina McKenzie. I'm with the Light Program, living independently through employment, and we assist homeless and low-income individuals finding jobs in order to lead a stable life. Briefly, in 2009, LaFSA sent a report saying that there were 4,000 homeless people living in Skid Row, which is a ridiculous amount for the United States in general. And our funds were recently slashed. And I'm thinking, if we want our community to change, we need to assist our clients with cover letters. We need to assist them with motivating them, providing them services so they can get out there and work, so we can change the dynamic of our community, because this is a problem. And if we want to effectively change Skid Row, we need to be able to support the agencies that support our clients, many of which have barriers to employment. And I hope you can reconsider the budget that you have in mind right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Next, we have Gregory Stafford, Kevin Key, Clinton Carter.
Good morning, Council. My name is Gregory Stafford, and I am program manager for the Light Program, as Joseina stated, living independently through employment. Now, it's interesting, when I first came down to work on Skid Row, you know, from the outside looking in, you wonder, or I wondered, as I wondered, you know, does anybody here, you know, want to work? Because it seems like from the outside looking in, everybody just wants to smoke or, you know, that sort of thing. But it was, you know, interesting, as I started working there, those persons or individuals who really wanted to change their lives found their way inside to the Light Program, and we were able to assist them with employment. In 2010, I have numbers here, where we had 5,878 visits into the Light Program. Those were people or individuals from the community who found their way through, you know, everything in Skid Row, that sort of thing that would deter them from coming in to the Light Program. Out of that 5,878 persons who came through, who came into it, we assisted 245 persons with full-time employment. We also assisted 76 persons with part-time employment. Out of the veterans, we assisted 22, and out of the ex-offenders, there was 148 offenders who we assisted last year with full-time employment. Now, we've only been open since 2007, November of 2007, and I think that we've made a significant difference in the community already with, as things are simple, as helping someone with, who comes in with no hope, which is a big thing, or low self-esteem, which of course also is a big thing, or no confidence at all, and after they leave out of the Light Program with just a resume or, you know, things like that, or interview skills, you know, they leave out with their hands up.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Key?
Good morning, Your Honor. Mr. Wesson. Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Perry. I've got to say this, all these years I've known you, Ms. Perry, this is the first time that I see that you write with the right hand. The left hand. Yeah. I'm here as a resident of Skid Row. I represent the United Coalition East Prevention Project. I'm also a member of D-Link, however, not here in that representative capacity. As you can see from our numbers, we're not going away. We have quite a big contingent here. Skid Row is well-represented. Last week, I submitted a white paper for your file regarding making the case for culture on Skid Row. My pastor, Pastor Jeff, teaches us that we are in the midst of a spiritual movement with social implications. Yesterday, me, a recovering addict, gave a lecture and a tour to the Graduate Arts Journalism students from the USC Annenberg School. A director and producer from The Bold and Beautiful, the largest-watched daytime drama show in the world, joined us at my request. Those are the DVDs that I gave to you, Mr. Wesson, and to you, Ms. Perry. Hopefully, you'll take the opportunity to look at them. I would like to leave you with this. Wouldn't it be a great legacy for each and every one of you to have helped us change the narrative about Skid Row to reflect our reality as the world's largest recovery community? My issue is drugs and alcohol, but we're talking about domestic violence. We're talking about disabled vets. We're talking about people who are trying to overcome the stigmatization from being caught up in the prison industrial complex, from homelessness, from mental illness. We ask for your help and your support. Thank you, and I made it.
Yeah, you did. Thank you. Mr. Carter?
Yes, my name is Clinton Carter. I've been in California for three years. The first day I got off the plane, I got a job through life. There's jobs out there, but it's not help out there. I got 3,200 pages of help to give to y'all. But before I can give it to y'all, I need y'all to give something back to me. Can I get ten policemen volunteers? If you want to stop crying, ain't nobody going to smoke dope in front of no policeman. Y'all pass right by the dope man, right past the addict. I'm not here to talk about the funding that y'all trying to cut because that's, you know, that's not the big issue. It's money down there. But can y'all donate, walk through there, and stop it? I've been here three years. Y'all ain't stopped it. Do y'all want to stop it? Y'all walk right past it, you drive past it, you waste gas, your horses come down there, put maneuver on the ground than the people that come with the food and throw paper on the ground. Can anybody in this committee or behind me walk down Skid Row? I just got off work. I'm tired, you know. When y'all going to help? Y'all have all these committees. Like I said, I got 32 pages that I'm going to donate, and it's free of help. It's free. You know, I got 40 seconds, but I'm going to keep saying it. Do the right thing. When y'all going to do the right thing? For my kids, I'm trying to bring my kids from Tennessee up here. I've been here three years, been watching y'all, been sitting in the back, not saying nothing, but it's time to say something. I just had a birthday Saturday. I turned 51. When y'all going to help? Help Skid Row. Quit throwing funding into Skid Row and ain't throwing help in Skid Row. You can bring money all day. This man comes by, throw money out the window every day. Skid Row is like this rubber band. It's going to keep bouncing back because y'all won't do nothing. Please help, and I thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. I believe we've been joined by Councilmember Alacon. I thought I saw him in the back. Next, we have Roy Cassine, Angelica Generoso, and Noel Weiss.
Good morning, Councilman. My name is Roy Cassine. Excuse me. I'm just a resident in the Los Angeles area, downtown area, which is known as the Skid Row area. I just want to comment today personally about how I feel about the city of Los Angeles. It's a very, very, very beautiful place to live, and I have a lot to do with it personally, but we're not going to get into that. But we will get into the fact that the city of Los Angeles doesn't deserve to have Fifth, Sixth, and Seventh Street look any different than all the beautiful structure that has been developed in the city in this era. The city of Los Angeles is a very beautiful place to live and an outstanding place to achieve goals and all your possibilities that you could have in your heart and in your life planned. But also, we must look at the fact that the area of this so-called Skid Row, I just call it downtown Los Angeles, because Sixth and Seventh and Eighth Street is no different than First all the way down. It's a beautiful area. It has a beautiful skyline view, but the ugly look that it has is because of neglect, and people don't want to understand that, yes, people will hit bottom. Some people sitting in this office and sitting in this room may hit bottom tomorrow. Many people have. But the development and the money that needs to be spent is on our city. Keep our city together. Don't separate this side, that side, just for the fact that these people are down on their luck. Let God work, let things happen, and let's take some of this money and do this. And I thank you for allowing me just to speak from my heart this morning.
Well, thank you for coming down again. Ms. Generoso?
Yes, thank you. Good morning. My name is Angelica Generoso, and I represent Jewish Family Service of Los Angeles Home Secure Program. I am here today to ask for your continued support to Home Secure by opposing its elimination and consolidation. Home Secure is a vital part of the L.A. community. We focus on personal safety through the installation of safety device installation and also through raising community awareness by providing workshops on fall injury prevention and home safety. We do not have a waiting list and are able to serve within one to two weeks of service requests. Our cost per household is also $350, and our trained staff provide a thorough needs assessment for each recipient, and will link them to other community services. And lastly, I would just like to thank the honorable members of this committee for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of Home Secure Program, and I would like to also thank you for your continued support to Home Secure and your help for helping us keep this program in the community. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Mr. Weiss?
Committee members, my name is Noel Weiss. I think what I'm looking for is vision on the part of our political leadership, and specifically, what is going to happen once the CRA is abolished. I'm concerned about a little stove piping here, and I think there's some overlap relative to the ability of this council to truly empower the people from a bottom-up situation. I don't care whether they're poor or middle-class. I think the chairman of this committee will remember, I think it was four years ago, community block grant funds, $5 million in two weeks, was gotten from where else but the CRA? It was sitting around in the CRA. That money went to good use. It helped preserve the middle class in the middle of the speculative boom, and Herb did a lot for those people, Chuck Tennant obviously being one of them, but basically making them homeowners.
Noel, I don't remember yesterday.
Okay, well, then, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to remind you, Herb. The fact of the matter is, these community block grant funds are critical, of critical importance with respect to the preservation of the middle class, and part of that also in terms of a unifying theme of this city is homeownership or property ownership, TOPA, Tenant Opportunity to Purchase Act, the kind of thing that Ed Ray has put together in one poor area, for example, of his district with Cambria Apartments. We're in a situation now where HUD is, and the way that they're doing business is now under change. We have an opportunity, rare, maybe once in a generation, to truly empower the people relative to the use of these funds as well as homeownership funds, and specifically, I want to point out Senate Bill 454, which was signed by the governor last October, I believe, basically, any project that's financed by the people, and we're talking about 10 or 15,000 units of expiring Section Eight contracts in the next five years. That bill empowers and directs, really, the tenants have a right to be able to buy their buildings as cooperatives, assuming that those projects were financed with the federal, state, or city dollars. So I'm hoping that in your evaluation of this, we can be in a situation to provide some vision and to look beyond just the traditional stove piping. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, so at this point, if we could have the representatives of the department come So I don't know who wants to start, and then we'll open it up for questions from the members of the committee.
I can start, just to provide a brief overview. Angelica Samaya with the CAO's office.
And Anne Marie Sauer with the CLA. And our other partner in crime, Trina Unzicker, couldn't be here, but we know she would if she could.
She was a very significant contributor to the staff report, so we wanted to acknowledge her so that you all know. The report before you, at least the CLA CAO report before you, addresses recommendations relative to the proposed consolidated plan to allocate $159.7 million in U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development funds from four federal grants for a 12-month period beginning April 1st, 2011, through March 31st, 2012. These four grants include the Home Investment Partnership Grant, which is an estimated $50.7 million budget, this grant, as well as the Emergency Shelter Grant, which is $3.2 million, and the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS or HOPWA at $12.6 million. These three grants are administered by the L.A. Housing Department, and the most significant one, the Community Development Block Grant, which is a $93.2 million proposed budget for the Thirty-Seventh Program Year. I want to point out that, subsequent to the release of our staff report, our offices identified a spreadsheet error and revised our total resources figure, and the number went up from 89. And the number went up from eighty-nine point nine million dollars to ninety-three point two million dollars. And what it did is, it changed the overall cut from the current year to, uh, a three point three million dollar additional, uh, fortunately, it was additional revenues which were identified, so it brought us up to ninety-three point two. There was a revised attachment A that was distributed, um, you should have that before you. And what this resources summary reflects are our assumptions about how much funds will be available in the next program year. This includes program income projections, uh, as well as program and administrative savings, which are old block grant money, which we, we felt were appropriate to reprogram into this next program year. With so much change and real-time information that is consistently being received by the city on the federal budget, our offices were challenged to propose adjustments and cuts to the mayor's thirty-seventh program year budget in the event that the CDVG entitlement amount is significantly reduced. Both at the state and federal level, these budgets threaten to cut significant resources that would not only impact the CDVG grant, but also other city budgets and other city departments. It is anticipated that, subsequent to the release of this report, or, I'm sorry, subsequent to potential action by this council, HUD will announce the city's final CDVG allocation. The latest that we've received was, uh, as of yesterday, and this is that today, the Senate will start voting on two alternative budgets to fund the federal government through the end of the current fiscal year. This is what affects our next year's budget. There will be a vote on the U.S. House of Representatives Continuing Resolution, known as HR1, and that would cut the CDVG budget by sixty-two point five percent. A sixty-two point five percent cut to the city's entitlement would result in a reduction to the city's entitlement of approximately four point, forty-eight point nine million. It really does just cut the budget into half. There's also a vote on, on alternative budgets developed by Senate Appropriations Committee Chairman, which would fully fund CDVG at the current level, among other recommendations. And so the outcome of this, um, particular action would significantly, uh, change what we're looking at. Our, our budget anticipates the less severe potential cut that could possibly happen, which is reflecting a seven point five million dollar reduction. And that number reflects President Obama's reduction figure for the thirty-eighth program year. It's not even for the current year. So we felt that this budget was relatively, um, could have been a lot more pessimistic. We tried to take an optimistic approach at that. And so that's where we cautioned, uh, we were very challenged, and even at that, we were, we were not being as draconian as might be.
So, um, the budget before you is a twelve-month budget, but because we are not yet financially confident about the funding level, based on obviously the information Angelica provided, the budget before you reflects six months' funding from April, April 1st through September 30th of this year. And we took a real strategic approach to manage funding expectations due to uncertainty of available funds and resources, and also to provide the council with greater flexibility in programming funds in what we're calling Phase Two. So the budget before you, the revised attachment A provides funding for Phase One, and then our offices would, would report back by August 1st about the impact of the federal and state cuts and how that impacts us locally. And we would also come back with the final adjustments and contract authorities for the remaining six months. In the event of a larger reduction in the entitlement, the sixty-two and a half percent or something significant like that, we would be coming back much sooner to get direction from you about additional program cuts, and so we could make recommendations. We, as Angelica said, we're really challenged in putting this budget together. Um, we considered council and mayor priorities, instructions from this committee, but in light of the impending potential reductions to CDVG, we had other, uh, factors that we included while reviewing each item. And we literally, literally went item by item to review the projects. Um, we were prioritizing the preservation and maintenance of existing services at levels that keep the programs viable, but obviously, it reduced funding levels over new activities. To the extent possible, we were trying to prevent or minimize the layoffs of the city workforce. We were also trying to prevent additional general fund impacts and allocate funds to projects or programs where CDVG funds are required as a match source, or where the city has invested significantly and/or where funds are significantly leveraged. We also looked at project readiness and eligibility determinations. And we did give priority to the Section 108 debt service for the Housing Department that was not funded in the mayor's proposed plan. Um, part of our, as part of our analysis, we also reached out to the departments to get a sense of the impact and get their input, and that's attachment J of your report. And we recognize that departments are still in the process of analyzing the impact of our proposed reductions, um, on their staffing levels. And we know the impacts will vary depending on how much their positions rely on other sources, either through the general fund or other grants, which is why we would be coming back to you with recommendations for, regarding the impact and Phase Two funding. We're prepared to answer any questions we have.
Good morning. Richard Venvo, General Manager for the Community Development Department. Um, I understand from the amendments that were distributed this morning that the plan is to annualize, uh, the budget, so I would delete remarks directed at that, uh, issue and, um, uh, speak on other issues that I feel need to be brought to your attention. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on the Thirty-Seventh Program Year Action Plan. As you know, the CDD is the, is the CBD, CDVG Grant Manager and the overall point of contact on HUD funding. In this capacity, the CDD has the responsibility to effectively manage the city's Community Development Block Grant allocation and ensure compliance with federal program rules and regulations. The proposed action plan includes funding for CDD staff to administer Community Development Block Grant programs. Although the CDD will receive a significant reduction in its administrative allocation based on the proposal, my finance officer has determined that we can retain our current employment level and still provide full-cost recovery for related costs as anticipated with our city budget submission, provided that the department is allowed to carry over previous-year funding. Department looks forward to working with you, the mayor's office, and our community partners on an action plan that improves the long-term economic and social well-being of city residents and the revitalization of communities through the use of federal consolidated plan funding. We appreciate your leadership and support of CDD and the successful implementation of these plans.
Okay. Members' questions? Ms. Perry?
Um, I have a couple of questions I wanted to make. Uh, first of all, I want to thank and recognize the staff for all their hard work. The CLA, and the CAO, and CDD, I know that this is probably the one of the most difficult consolidated plans you've ever had to prepare. Um, today, we're essentially considering a plan based on funding estimations from HR1 proposed a budget cut of over sixty percent to Community Development Block Grant Funds, and we still don't know the final entitlement amount until Congress adopts a budget. Now, I appreciate the fact that the CLA and the CAO have budgeted utilizing a thirteen percent reduction as a measure of being more conservative, so that we don't overextend, overextend ourselves, but they have also recommended measures to help absorb the additional cuts if necessary. And the report before us contains, uh, an approximate five point eight million reserve fund usage, and I wanted to ask the CLA or the CAO if this is the first consolidated plan that has utilized a reserve fund in this manner.
It is my understanding that there was a reserve fund used in, uh, pre, uh, previous year when there were some issues with the CBDOs.
Right. That was, uh, it was, I wish I could remember the exact program year. I guess we could look, look at the budget. Um, it was when the city was undergoing a reinterpretation of what the Community-Based Development Organization category, um, qualifications were, and there were a number of agencies that were, uh, potentially no longer going to be eligible in light of the new interpretation. So there was a reserve set aside pending final confirmation of, uh, what this criteria was. In, in our case, the reserve, we, we tried really, we tried really hard to find an appropriate title or label for our version, because it really wasn't a, a reserve. It really is what we believe to be, um, an allocation to Phase Two, which would be the second six months of the program year, where we had, uh, included an attachment on our report that identified everything in attachment A, which is the CDVG budget and proposed projects. That would equal Phase Two, and this five point eight million set aside was Phase Two funding pending, um, either two things, either council and mayor prioritization of how the funds should be distributed, or, once we know what the final entitlement amount, if there were any, uh, council priority changes to projects that should or should not be continued, that money would be first prioritized to those projects.
So how does that situation compare or contrast to the situation we face today?
The difference being that, um, what is the difference? The, the biggest difference is that this applies to the entire budget as opposed to one category, public services versus CBDO.
We did break it out, because there is the cap on public services and admin, so we did put a reserve for that. But again, the intent being that that would be funding for Phase Two, and, again, once we know the final entitlement, would we, we would be able to come back with recommendations. So if it is just a seven and a half percent cut, we could move forward with our six-month funding recommendations for the second phase, or we would know, okay, we've already set that money aside that we aren't gonna get, so we would be in a good position to deal with the final entitlement.
All right. I have, uh, just two points I wanted to make, um, this, uh, issue, uh, Mr. Chair. I wanted to make a motion asking the CLA, two motions, asking the CLA and the CAO to convene a, a very fast meeting with LASSA, with CDD and Housing, to address cash flow issues for LASSA and its subcontractors, including the feasibility of LASSA and Housing being able to access the HUD line of credit for the Community Development Block Grant and report to council with recommendations. And I know we're meeting in council about this tomorrow. Second instruction I, I have or motion is CLA, CAO to initiate discussion with HUD today before this item is heard at council tomorrow regarding the establishment of a reserve fund within the con plan and the phased budget. And we have one day to do this, so it's already twelve-thirty there. Uh, so, I guess unless you're talking to the local office, see if we can get an answer on the record on that tomorrow, too. So those are my two requests.
No, and that's fine. And another thing is, is my understanding, there are differing views where it relates to the six-month budget and the one-year budget. So what I would like to have happen yesterday is for the CAO's office, the CLA's office, the mayor's office, and, and my office to communicate with HUD to find out, I mean, because you hear, you know, information, we heard information yesterday that HUD would not accept six months. So that needs to be clarified to give us enough time to make whatever adjustments we need to make.
Okay. And I do just want to emphasize that it is a twelve-month budget with a six-month spending plan. So, I mean, we could provide that information to HUD.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? Mr. Cardenas?
Yeah. Yeah, I just want to, um, make an amendment to attachment A1, uh, and that is on item number fifty-eight. Uh, if you look at column E, it says three hundred thirty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And when you look at column F2, it only has a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars. I would like to amend it to reflect in column F2 to replace the hundred and sixty-eight thousand with the figure three hundred thirty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Hopefully, with the efforts of the chairman of this committee and the mayor's folks, who always have two cents to put into any changes of this, uh, this document, and, uh, the CLA, CAO would have you, that you could figure out where you can replenish those dollars into the, that column, into that line item, and figure out where you're gonna get it from. I don't have two hundred or three hundred employees like the mayor's office has. I'm not the chairman of this committee. I don't have, uh, the, the amount of staff to figure out the latter part of the details. But I am an elected official, looking to protect and respect the people of the sixth district, and, uh, I feel very strongly that that's the appropriate amount to fund. When I look at some of the other, uh, numbered items and, uh, the change between A and A1, A apparently was a six-month, uh, budget, and A1 is a, uh, more reflective of, um, all of the uncertainties that were spoken to, but trying to reflect a twelve-month budget. And, uh, I saw that there are various items where the funding did restore back to the original twelve-month, uh, requests on those items, but for some reason, that was left out. I would assume that was a mistake, uh, but I caught it, so therefore, let's fix it before we vote on this on the council. Thank you.
Okay, we, we will make that.
I just was gonna provide clarification, because that was part of that program consolidation. So those contracts, initially, CDD was asking to extend them for three months. We recommend it, and I believe that's what the amendment A1 says as well, to extend them for six months. So that's just six months' funding, because the second six months would be the RFP and the consolidated program.
Yeah, but as a policymaker, I still am not convinced about that, the six-month, six-month policy decision that the council will make based on the recommendation of the department. Thank you.
So, a, as we're doing so many things today, let's make the appropriate adjustment where it relates to that. Any more questions? Concerns? Okay, I want to thank you and thank everyone for all of the hard work that they did.
I have two motions, uh, actually, do you rather do them as instructions or motions?
Whatever, however you want to do it, I'm comfortable with both of them.
All right. Can I get a second on this?
My, you have my second. Okay. So, um, where is, if you could, if you could put your other hat?
I just want to make sure we. Is my other hat?
You have your other hat on?
I do.
Okay, so then, at this point, what do we have before us? And I'd like for you to factor in, uh, the, the two motions that Ms. Perry made that I seconded, and Mr. Cardenas's concern.
Okay, we have an amendment with attachment A1 that was, and other attachments, revised attachments that have been submitted. There is a motion from Ms. Perry regarding cash flow issues for LASSA and instructing our offices to meet, and we will do that. There is another motion that you seconded that Ms. Perry introduced regarding, uh, that we immediately speak with HUD regarding the reserve fund and the phased funding. There is also a request that our offices meet with the mayor and your office so that we can communicate with HUD, so we're all on the same page. And then the last amendment regarding item fifty-eight to restore that funding for one year to three hundred thirty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Okay. Okay, then, uh, with, with, without objection, um, we will adopt the amended CAO and CLA report. Ms. Perry?
I do have a question, and I, and I so deeply appreciate your second on my motions.
Thank you.
I just want to tell you that.
People that, I think we're both left-handed, we're both from Cleveland, Ohio.
That's right. Which leads me to ask you the following question. Uh, you have some amending motions today.
Yes.
And I wanted to vote no on those. And, uh, can you break out my part?
Yes, why don't we separate?
Thank you.
Separate the question.
Thank you for your indulgence.
And then let's have a roll call vote. Okay?
Chair?
Now, you're up.
Yes. Uh, so regarding, uh, the, relative to the Thirty-Seventh Program Year Consolidated Plan, uh, item number one is to replace attachment A with attachment A dash one. Councilmember Wesson?
Aye.
Uh, councilmember, uh, Cardenas?
Aye.
Uh, councilmember Alacon? Uh, councilmember Perry? Item number two is delete attachment C. Councilmember Wesson?
Aye.
Councilmember Cardenas?
Aye.
Councilmember Alacon?
Aye.
Councilmember Perry? Item number three is to replace attachment H with attachment H dash one. Councilmember Wesson?
Aye.
Councilmember Cardenas?
Aye.
Councilmember Alacon? Councilmember Perry? Item number four is to replace attachment I with attachment I dash one. Councilmember Wesson?
Aye.
Councilmember Cardenas?
Aye.
Councilmember Alacon? Councilmember Perry?
Nope. Nope.
You only get one no.
Can I have, can I just have like a blanket no?
You get, yeah.
And then you vote yes on mine, and then we can go. Okay.
What, is there a way to?
Okay.
Why don't we just do the remaining?
And then we'll just, okay. Uh, item number five is to add attachment K, uh, which is the SNL 2011-32 total sites. Item number six is authorize the general managers of, uh, the Community Development Department and Los Angeles Housing Department, or Designees and other implementing departments or and Los Angeles Housing Department, or designees and other implementing departments or designees to prepare controller instructions and make technical adjustments that may be required and are consistent with the amendment recommendations. Amend the necessary action plan to reflect this amendment and authorize the controller to implement these instructions, subject to the approval of the CAO. Relative to program income, item number one is to delete Recommendation 7B. Item number two is to delete Recommendation 7C. Relative to report backs and additional instructions, item number one is to delete Recommendation 16. Item two is to replace Recommendation 25 with Regarding Funding for the Summer Night Lights Program. Number 46, request the mayor to submit to the council by April 1, 2011, the budget for the Summer Night Lights program that provides a breakdown of all revenues, including all public and private funding sources and in-kind contributions secured to date or anticipated by line item and all line item expenditures. Item number three, delete Recommendation 28. Item number four, add Recommendation 29 to State Regarding Funding for CDD Economic Development Program Delivery, number 71. Instruct CDD that a minimum of $2.5 million in resources be spent in the Economic Development Program Delivery. These funds must be used to pay for CDD staff assigned to Economic Development Program Delivery and may not be transferred to another program slash project without council approval. Item number five, add Recommendation number 30 to State Regarding Funding for Port Tech Business Incubator, number 60, subject to the CLA and CAO convening a meeting with the mayor, Council District 15, CDD, CRA, Port Tech, and any other affected parties regarding the feasibility of the city purchasing or acquiring a building that could be leased to Port Tech LA for a de minimis amount, with covenants requiring the repayment of the purchase price of the building in incubator services and job creation within a specified time period. Item number five, oh, it should be item number six. Add Recommendation number 31 to State Regarding Funding for Taylor Yard. Funding for this project is subject to a status report to council that includes a timeline for completion of the project, including project milestones, and a line item budget, including sources and uses. Relative to the 34th program year CDVGR funding, item number one, approve the reprogramming of $500,000 from West Angeles Plaza to District Square in CDVGR funds, subject to verification by CDD. Item number two, authorize the general manager of the CDD or designee to prepare controller instructions and make technical adjustments that may be required and are consistent with the CDVGR recommendation. Amend the necessary action plan to reflect this action and authorize the controller to implement these instructions, subject to approval of the CAO. Now, there will be a voice vote. Councilmember Wesson?
Aye.
Councilmember Cardenas?
Aye.
Councilmember Alacon?
Aye.
Councilmember Perry?
No.
Okay. Is there any more business?
About my motion together.
Oh, we have to vote on Ms. Perry's.
Okay, so, yeah, sorry about that. You know, can you vote yes?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so, together separately?
Yeah, I don't think, without...
Reflective of my amendment, correct?
The action that we just took that Sharon has, yes, that is included.
So on Ms. Perry's motions, without objection, that'll be the order. Okay, is there any more business before this committee?
No, sir.
This committee's adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, wait a minute. Okay, don't talk to me right now. Don't talk to me right...